Katie Crockett, the Executive Vice President of Lamarrone Pagano, who will facilitate this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tom Gazounis. As Superintendent just said, I'm going to be very brief and just say that I'm here to help support the community through this project all the way through. And tonight's presentation will be done by Katie Crockett from Lamarrone Pagano Architects. Thank you.
I thank you for the opportunity to give you this update tonight. I understand you have a large agenda. This is your first school committee meeting since school started. That has always got to be fairly extensive. Additionally, we are going to have a full public presentation with a much more detailed update in the upcoming weeks for staff and anybody who's interested in coming. Tonight, we were asked to do a brief summary of a process that's been going on for several months. So what we have done is taken that long presentation that we've developed and made it into a more concise summary, just to give you sort of a sneak preview of the whole thing and give you an idea of what has been going on. Peter Caruso from our office is joining me tonight. We have quite a team from Lamarrone Pagano. Peter's been with us for almost 20 years now and is a registered architect as well. So additionally, the team that we have, aside from Daedalus and Lamarrone Pagano, includes, of course, the Marlboro School Building Committee and, very importantly, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. As you are probably aware, there is a significant reimbursement from the state for this project. So we work hand in hand with them in concert throughout all of these submissions. What I'm going to talk with you about briefly tonight is an overview of what a feasibility study is through MSBA. This includes actually three components, two of which we've completed. Those are the Preliminary Design Program, or what is called the PDP, where we looked at program, existing conditions, in this case at Richer, and alternate sites. And then the Preferred Schematic Report, which we are completing right now, which is options development and the preferred solution. When we complete this, we will be embarking on schematic design. This is a very important part of an MSBA project. Here you can see the timeline of where we are. We are at the end of PSR, as they call it, the Preferred Solution Report. And you can see we've been working all these months ahead up here. The pointer isn't working here. So we will complete schematic design by the beginning of the new year. And then we will submit it to MSBA. And once that is approved, there is a 120-day period for local funding approval, which is critical to the project. And at that juncture, once we have that approved, we can go ahead through the full design documents. And if all goes well, we're looking at construction beginning in the spring of 2019. And we expect it to be about a two-year period. So that gives you a snapshot of the schedule. MSBA is extremely rigorous in the approach that they take for projects. Each one of these phases, we have to complete. There's no going back. If you go back, you go back to the beginning. So it's very rigorous for each step to be sure that all elements have come to the surface that are critical to a project. When they tasked us with this project, they asked us to look at three different options. One was a kindergarten to fourth grade option with 675 students at the Richer site, which is sort of a status quo evaluation with the increased enrollment that you've seen in your city. The second option was a K to five grade configuration for 1,060 students and all to be added to the Richer site, a huge addition to that site, either new construction or addition, and redistribute all of the fifth grade through the elementary level. So Whitcomb would be released of those fifth graders, and they would be distributed into all of the other schools. And the final option they asked us to review was a K to five option, which is adding a fourth elementary school in the city. And so this was our task, fairly complicated. We dove in, got started. And one of the first things we did was develop what's called the program. And for the school committee in particular, this is an important juncture where we think about what that building means in terms of curriculum, how it fits into your community and the site. And some of the things that we did as a group were we surveyed the staff of the schools and got their input in terms of what doesn't work in the classrooms that they have, how could we improve that? We went in toward other MSBA-funded elementary school projects of different grade levels and sizes, addition renovation, new construction, to get insights from people as they saw them and those that were living with them. And then we had a whole series of meetings with various staff and administration throughout the district to develop these diagrams, which we call bubble diagrams. Wonderful, aren't they? They're really something that's a graphic representation of the organization of the school. So what we can see in this one is an interest in grades K through 12 being clustered together and 3 through 5. And 5, the 5 there is significant. And I don't need to tell you, the school committee has been thinking a great deal about this, as well as the administration, and has decided to endorse the K through 5 configuration. So that became a key factor in our programming early. Both of these clusters of classrooms are hinged around the media center. And the vision for this is very interesting, more to come. It will be something more of a maker space and has the art rooms adjacent to it. These are sort of what you would call the academic areas. As you enter the school, you'll enter through a vestibule off hours and then directly into the main administration suite, excuse me, before you go through the balance of the school. This is an example of a welcoming measure in terms of having a security measure for entering the school. Community aspects of the school will be very important, and we have the gym, the cafeteria, the music suite, the stage, what's called OTPT, which is a mini gym, as well as a community room, which will be multipurpose, right there, right off of the lobby for all hours. Additionally, we developed these diagrams, which are to show more detail on those academic clusters. Really what these show is the integration of special education, which is the lighter blue. Big feature for this particular school is a significant special education program. The decision was made to integrate the medically fragile as well as the autism program for this grade level in here, as well as a very strong inclusion program for every grade level and significant ELL classrooms, so the English learner, language learner classrooms that make Marlboro unique. When we went through all of these options, and this is really Cliff Notes, we realized that the, we went through what MSBA has as a space summary template. This is a guideline for space. In the case of Marlboro, in all options, the amount of space required was greater than what MSBA's guidelines called for. The reason was the special education programs and the ELL, for the most part. Totally makes sense for this particular school. MSBA embraced this, endorsed it, and allowed us to propose greater square footage for each of these options. Then we looked, not then, in tandem, this is a parallel track, we looked at the existing Richer site. So if you remember, some of those options, we had to analyze that site. What we found is a site that is very well-developed already. It's quite full, you might say. You've already added a drive off of Ripley Avenue to help with the bus circulation, for example. It has significant wetlands, which you can see through the aqua color down towards that southeast quadrant that impede how much development we can do. Of course, we have 495. The school itself is built kind of up on an upper level, and there's a significant drop in topography down to the playing field area. So very quickly, we analyzed this for all of the options on this site. 675, 1,060 students, none of them were practically feasible on this site. And we'll go into much more detail about that in our public presentation if you're interested. But the building itself is in excellent condition. It's been very well-maintained over the years. You've done capital improvements to the boiler room, to your IT system. It really looks great. It was well-built to begin with. The classrooms are a really good size for what MSBA recommends. What we call the core facilities, the gym, the cafeteria, the library, are undersized according to MSBA's sizes. And that was really the crux of the matter for us in terms of getting it into what we needed for an MSBA project. This is an excellent candidate to maintain in your school system as you have and continue to add capital improvements to it to keep it a viable elementary school within your district. It's demographically in a great location on the west side of the major highway there. So although it's great as it is in terms of this very large project that we were trying to find a space for, it just didn't make sense. So we started to look what, at alternative sites. Where could that possibly, that fourth school be located within the city? And as you can see by the aqua-colored thumbtacks here, the elementary schools are already very well-distributed through the city. And we have the Marlboro High School, the Whitcomb School, and the Early Childhood Center here in the center. Through a very exhaustive study, I'm going to say, we scoured the city looking for reasonable sites for a school. And mind you, the starting point for that is eight to 10 acres of buildable land. And that is challenging. And in a site where you can have reasonable transportation of large buses and service trucks and so on, where it's not going to impede the traffic at all, where you have the right soils and you don't have a tremendous number of wetlands. So in the end, when we finalized our evaluation, the only reasonable site to consider was the high school athletic field portion of the site. And this is a diagram of the high school site. The highlighted portion with the darker green in it is two practice fields that will be able to be taken care of by the artificial turf baseball field that is in plans for across the street. So because you'll be able to schedule that more frequently, you'll be able to make a better use of that part of the site, which is for an elementary school. Now, this site is interesting, and it may be emblematic of many of them that we studied in Marlboro, to be honest with you. It has almost 29 acres of available land within the parameters of it. It's adjacent to the ice rink, but it has a stream running through the center of it. So the white portion that you see right through the center is wetlands, and there are no build zones around that, as well as to the right side of it. So we have highlighted the portions of the site that are most developable, and it reduces to be closer to nine acres at that point. There's very steep topography in the back that slopes down to that body of water. So we have developed a plan that meets the program for the 610-student fourth elementary school for the city of Marlboro. And this is one that is what's called the Preferred Schematic Level. As I said, we will take this and embark upon the schematic design. So there's a lot of detail to be developed in this. But what we are looking at is a school in one section of the site with parking on the opposite. And during schematic design, we're going to take a close look at all of the traffic implications for this particular site. We have three different types of circulation we have to consider. One is buses. So we have, this is just for the elementary school, 10 buses. And we've developed an area where the buses can pull in off of that Poirier Drive Road and queue up 10 of them. Additionally, we have five minivans for that special education program, and we have found a place for them to go in off-site and be able to disembark the kids so that they're out of traffic and they can get in close to those medically fragile and autism special education spaces. And finally, we're looking at options for the parent pickup and drop-off to get them off of the road quickly, queued up, and they will enter, we envision, in the back of the building. And one of the first things we're going to do during schematic design is engage a traffic engineer to analyze the traffic in this entire area. We understand there's significant athletic practice, very vibrant community with the high school adjacent, and even Whitcomb close by. We actually see this as an advantage curriculum-wise, in terms of being able to see this as a place where you have bridging staff, perhaps music lessons, all different types of things, where you have schools close together in almost a campus arrangement. What we want to do is analyze it so that the traffic flow works well for that as well. The plan itself, we're excited about, the main entry is this right here. So that's the vestibule that I talked about. The yellow indicates the administration, so again, people have to flow through there. Main lobby, we've got the cafeteria and the gym. And then you can kind of see these clusters of classrooms. We have K1 and 2. And they're all surrounding a common room, which is a space that really helps with promoting flexible curriculum delivery methods, places for tutorials, for groups to come together, for project-based learning, for that STEAM curriculum that you're developing throughout your district. So we're excited about that. More about that later. The upper level is, there's the media center that we talked about in the bubble diagram, that's a hinge element with the art rooms adjacent, and we have 3, 4, and 5 up here, all with a special education integrated ELL as well. All of this, at this moment, comes to about 109,000 square feet of building. Just to give you a reference, the existing Richer school is about 69,000 square feet. So it's a significantly larger building. We expect it to be about a 24-month construction period. Fabulous that there isn't an existing school on that site per se that we have to be concerned about, so that will help us in that regard. The budget that we've developed, and this is early, for construction alone is $55.8 million. And this is a summary of all of the options that we talked about. And again, we'll go into this in greater detail in the presentation that we do for the public. And I also understand that the full presentation that we've developed has been distributed to you. So if you have a chance, you can look through it and get more detail, you can get more of a preview at that time. But the important thing for you to understand is for that final option that we just talked about, the total project budget is about $67.5 million. So project budget includes design fees, OPM fees, testing, furniture, furnishings and equipment, what we call soft costs that surround a project, aside from what a contractor bids on. And then we looked at all of the options that were on the table. And what you can see here is when we analyzed program, construction impact for the students, the construction duration, the final efficiency of the plan and cost and other factors, this new school, the fourth one, for 610 students for grades K through 5, rose solidly to the top as a preferred solution. And so our intent is at the building committee meeting tomorrow to recommend approval of this, to submit to MSBA.
Questions from the committee?
Thank you for the presentation. It was helpful to get it ahead of time so we could, you know, kind of take a look over everything. And thank you for bringing up about the athletic sites, because that actually is something that I do have some concerns about, how we're making some of these things work. Because currently, if you look at, say, the spring sports, we'd have softball and baseball that would need to be covered. And right now, the current baseball location for the high school is under construction and as well over at Whitcomb School. So in theory, I'm just trying to understand how all of the field spaces is going to be able to be utilized, if you really start counting up some of the sports programs that are offered within the fall, limiting it just to JV and varsity per. We're talking about like six-plus groups of kids that need to be rotated in if you cover for like field hockey, soccer, and such. So I'm just trying to look at it, because I have to say personally, I didn't even realize we were starting down the avenue when the baseball soccer field up top started that work. And I'm just looking at the whole projection of how it's all going to play out, and I'm not sure if anyone's here that can speak to that, but...
I can tell you, we talked to the athletic director, he's going to make a work.
Okay.
I don't have a plan in place, but he said he can make it work.
He had provided us with a schedule of how he would make it work. And he has two years, you know, to figure it out too. But he did provide us with information on that.
That'd be great if he did give that, if there's a way. Thank you. That'd be helpful, because it, you know, it's a lot of logistics and timeframes to try to make sure not only the kids are able to get there and the parents can schedule, make their adjustments to schedule too, because I would assume, we're talking about practice timeframes being moved, not just game, games that would have to be worried about, but that'd be great. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee?
Thank you. The topography of the proposed location has already changed, though, with the construction going on in the city's, well, not that it isn't, the construction hasn't happened yet, but the proposed construction of the senior housing and then the land on the other side. So, I mean, that, again, would change, as was referred to the campus.
The only effect that's going to have, in fact, it wasn't quite ready for tonight, but it will be on our next agenda, for some drainage to be tied into school property. So I'm going to ask the school committee at the next meeting, once we put the information together, to allow an easement to go onto the drainage, onto the school property. You have to release it and manage the stormy and approve that. But really, that benchmark property has no effect really at all on the school property, other than, in the negotiations, we negotiated the 10 acres in the back to be donated to the city once it's done. How much of that is usable? Not a ton, but there is some of it we might approach on.
Right. And to have that ability possibly to create more of the, and you guys will get to look at that all at that point. Okay. I just, thank you.
There was discussion that there would be an information meeting to the public on September 5th. Are we moving forward with that, since it's next week and I haven't seen any advertising about it?
We're moving that to another time. We've been trying to find something that is acceptable. We thought we'd arrived on a date, but we're trying to make sure that LPA can be there, that the mayor can be there, that we don't have a curriculum night or a PTO meeting. So we are in the process of nailing that down. That's a great question.
And how is the website, the information website about the project coming along? Because I think the public is seeking information, and this will be helpful to forward people to this meeting online, but I know that there's questions.
We've seen a draft already, but I'll talk to, have Mr. Bergeron talk about it.
We've built the structure of the website. We've added all the content, and I've sent it to a couple people to take a look at. And I think additionally, we might want to send it to MSBA to take a look at. If I'm looking at Tom, Tom's given me a yes. Just so they can take a look at what we've put out there and just kind of, exactly, just give us a blessing, just to make sure it's ready to go. And I wanted to put this information on as well, so that way, there's different tabs for presentations, for schedule, for all those types of things.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more. You mentioned something about studying of the traffic patterns. And I'm not sure, you know, rate process, I'm sure it has to go down with the city being heavily involved. But already, trying to come out from the high school on that one side can be challenging, I guess I should say, even for some adult drivers that have been doing it for a while, much less than kind of adding some different layers. So is that something where, in looking at the traffic patterns, there would be a consideration for a stoplight or something at that potential intersection to help mitigate?
I want to just clarify one portion. We're setting a couple of different options to the SBA. Nothing is the chosen, although this hopefully is the recommendation of the committee to close the SBA. The SBA can come back to us and say you're doing a prison school. So we'll get into the next step of traffic patterns. And, you know, one of the things that was discussed is the times that the prison starts and ends, the staggers will be out in the high school. So that's going to be helpful, but we got to get around the patterns on the high school.
Tom Gazounis, one of the next phases that we will be doing is a traffic study. We have held that off until later in September, when the school sports are in play. Doing it now just didn't make any sense whatsoever. So that's why you don't have any of that traffic data analysis in front of you. We wanted to get it as up-to-date as possible and as accurate as possible, and that's why it's been pushed off.
Thank you. That's helpful to know that it's in process.
It's absolutely in process.
Thank you.
If I could add to that, we did ask the athletic director to give us a few dates that would be representative of not only home games but practices. So we have two targeted dates that would, again, show optimal use.
Other questions? Other questions from the committee? Again, the building committee has moved Marlboro to, maybe move this whole process forward to Boston. We'll wait to hear from them on how the preferred site is accepted. And we will be sending a date to that public meeting. Every step that goes down the line, we'll have more and more information. So thank you all very, very much. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
A pleasure. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Treeport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just trying to get the org chart up here for a quick look as part of my report. So Zip Trip. We want to thank all of the Marlboro Public School students and staff who showed up on quick notice in the middle of the summer to represent hashtag Panther Pride at the Zip Trip event at Ward Park. Special thanks to Communication Coordinator Raina Rego, who spearheaded much of this effort, making sure that our tent was in place to house our... making sure that our tent was in place to house our athletes, cheerleaders, music students, and STEM students. It was a wonderful event. Our new administrative and organizational chart you see before you, I showed it this morning at opening day, it will also be, if not, if it is not already, on the website. All administrative positions have been filled, including the new positions that were recently added to this bargaining unit, Unit B, Supervisors of Health Services, Visual Arts, Music, Wellness, and the Educational Team Leaders, formerly Team Chairs. I want to thank Earl Geary for the suggestion of putting the photos there. I think it was a tremendous idea. People have really enjoyed it, and I decided to add School Committee up there as well, and snagged a few pictures from certain websites and so on. So I do appreciate it. It didn't copy well in your packet, so I had Patty print out something, but we're going to try to get the best quality that we can on the website. Our leadership retreat was held last week, Monday, August 21st, and Tuesday, August 22nd. Day one saw a team of fifty-five administrators and teacher leaders at Jericho Hill, welcomed by Mayor Vigent, followed by a training by Asabet Valley Collaborative Staff on Cultural Proficiency, and we plan to continue that training further throughout the year, a potluck lunch, and an afternoon devoted to accountability topics, with a brief interlude for solar eclipse viewing. We had two pair of glasses that we passed around the group. Day two was really incredible. We boarded a bus from Alden, where we quested in teams for several hours, attempting to complete complex tasks, both mental and physical, exercising our problem-solving, communication, team dynamics, and learning to fail productively. Our debrief was the most important part of the day to me. We talked about the lessons we learned and what we can incorporate into our own roles this year in MPS, and special kudos to our brave questers, Michelle Bodenhendrick, Catherine Hennessy, and Heidi Matthews, for joining the learning at Bode Borg.
And I just left a meeting down at City Hall with Urban Affairs that was talking about the Apex Center, and they were trying to explain to the councilors what the escape room is, because we're going to have one down there.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
And I guess it's something you have to experience before you all understand, because they still don't understand.
That is quite true. That is quite true, Mr. Mayor. It was good. It was good.
It was interesting. New staff orientation. We welcomed thirty-five new staff members to the teachers' union last week with our traditional two-day orientation. And I should also welcome Anne Graham to the table, who is the MEA rep joining us tonight. She's the vice president of the MEA. Brendan St. George is the president. We said our goodbyes to Rupel this evening, and we welcome you to the table. Also, Donna is out of retirement this evening. If you might have noticed, she's acting, or interim, we're not sure. So new staff were welcomed, again, by Mayor Vigent, the superintendent and MPS administrators. Thanks always to City Councilor Don Landers, who took the group on his special grand tour of Marlboro. Throughout the two days, new staff learned a lot of things about our district, the values and what propels us, what our demographic is like, support services for our students, induction programs, our ALIS protocols, the technology in the district, and the operations in the HR and business office. And I want to give special thanks to Mary Murphy and Patty Brown, our HR Director, for spearheading this wonderful orientation. District goals I talked about this morning, they started with our leadership team, two separate meetings. In August, we continued with a very lively, I would say, and lengthy discussion at our leadership retreat. The district goals will be the beacon, the guiding light for school improvement plans, and further for administrative and teacher goal-setting, which is the first part of the evaluation cycle. As presented this morning, these goals are: increase positive outcomes for all students by strengthening academic and behavioral instructional strategies; two, support the partnership between the Marlboro community, Marlboro school families, and the Marlboro public schools through ongoing outreach opportunities and resources; and finally, address action steps as formulated in the district improvement plan, school improvement plans, and district technology plan. We are very pleased to announce that we have received another grant from the Office of the Attorney General in conjunction with the New England Patriots Anti-Violation Partnership. This has a goal of fostering long-term anti-violence and healthy relationship education. We're going to be developing student leaders to train their peers. Thirty high school students will be selected for this training that will take place in December, and the program will begin in spring of 2018. I want to thank Sharon Buckley, Guidance, I'm sorry, not Guidance anymore, Counseling Services Supervisor, and Jeff Radzinski, who helped me to write the grant. We're grateful for this opportunity, which, like the opioid grant, will support topics covered in the wellness curriculum for grades five through twelve. Communications update, you've noticed the outdoor signage has been updated in the schools with the new MPS logo, and work has begun on updating our district brochure. We have something smaller in mind this time, not that text-heavy booklet that you received a few years ago. We have something else up our sleeve that we'll soon have ready, perhaps by the Heritage Festival. And we're also poised to launch an MPS mobile app, and this really points to district goal number two, connecting with our families, with all of our families. And it's, I'm going to show you a quick video. I've attached to my report the flyer about it and the frequently asked questions, and we'll be rolling with this on September 5th. So I'm going to show you a very quick video, because I think it's that important to get this out in the public, but please don't try to connect before September 5th, because it's not ready yet. It's a trailer. It's a tease. It's a three-minute video. It's a trailer.
It's here, our district's official app. Enter the App Store to download your personal app today. You will have access to all the important school resources, tools, and information you need on a daily basis, in one amazing mobile app. Looking for a one-stop shop for everything you want to know about? The Stream feature allows you to do just that. From your schools, choose what information you want to see, including notifications, social media news, and even calendar events. It's a continuous-flowing feed, all in one place. You can now find all the important events and activities of our district in one location. Add any list of events from the app's calendar directly into your own personal calendar on your mobile device, consolidating the dates and times you care about.
Good, and I won't get blamed anymore.
When speaking in another language, in settings, you have access to over sixty-five foreign languages to ensure you have a user-friendly experience. Simply select the language you want to use, and the content of the app will be translated for you right away.
It's cool.
You can receive your school and district news on your phone, iPad, or tablet. The News feature lets you choose what specific content you want to see, such as announcements, updates, and social media news, all in one convenient feed. School notifications come from many places and in many different forms. With the app, you can now receive all these notifications in one place. Get notified of changes, alerts, and other important messages from the swamps you choose to follow.
Thanks, yeah.
Finding the phone numbers, email addresses, and locations of the teachers and staff you need to contact can be overwhelming, but with the app, it's easier than ever before. Just select a school in the directory, and you will find all the contact information you need instantly. So what are you waiting for? Show your school pride, and go down on our new official district mobile app.
Thank you for indulging me on that. I think it's terrific. I think it'll be wonderful.
And are you going to send that out to...
Yes. I have one more topic, and thank you, Tom, for being here. This is going to be very important that we thank Tom, who did so much for this. Tom and the IT Department and student interns have worked over the summer to ready the technology that was purchased for student and classroom use. New Chromebooks purchased in accordance with the guidelines outlined in the technology plan are ready for early September distribution to grades seven, nine, and ten. Chromebooks and carts were purchased for grade three, four, and five, in sufficient numbers to adjust for increasing populations at these levels. Classroom instruction will be augmented through the replacement of fifty-seven of our oldest technology projection systems, with forty Epson Bright Light short throw projectors and seventeen smart flat panel touchscreens. An iPad classroom cart was purchased and made ready for use at each of the three elementary schools. Additional iPads were purchased to replace second-generation iPads and to augment iPads available for EL students at different grade levels. We are blessed to have this technology in our district and to have had the foresight to appoint an instructional technology director to manage the flow, and it's, I would have to say, the past few years have been better. That concludes my report, with the exception of saying that the mayor and I will be around tomorrow and Thursday to welcome the children and staff, mostly, they were welcome today, but to see the children in the buildings tomorrow, we're going to the high school and the middle school.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple updates. The co-bid for transportation we're doing with Hudson will be released in early September, and we will get the bid results back by late September. Just so you know, as a school committee, you hold the sole option to extend our contract for two years at the CPI rate. When we put our contract out before, we tied it to CPI, but we also gave it a ceiling and a floor. The floor is zero percent, the ceiling is two and a half percent. I always tie contracts when I can to two and a half, because that's the levy limit, it makes sense. So knowing that, we have looked at what has been recently bid in the area. We're paying about two-hundred and ninety dollars for a three-tier bus right now, and that means a bus that runs an elementary, middle, and a high in the same day, twice per day. Bids are coming back in this area between three forty and three seventy. So they are coming back quite a bit higher right now, so I want to prepare you for that. The good news is that we do have that two-year extension at the CPI rate. So the worst came to worst, if the bid was very high, we could extend the current contract we have, and the maximum it can go up is two and a half percent for the next two years. At the end of those two years, there might be a pretty large increase. So just to give you an update on that. And right now, Hudson has only one year left on their extension. So we may go back out to bid in another year, just to see what the market is, and not because, you know, anything to do with the vendor, but I think it's just a good practice. If we already do a co-bid with another community, if we can go back out, even though we're already in the middle of a contract, we can just see what the market is paying, just to see where we're at that point. I want to say thank you to all the custodians, summer workers, who worked very hard, stripping floors, moving furniture, waxing, and making the schools shine. I toured all the schools with Andy White, and I'm really thankful for the hard work of the staff to get us ready for tomorrow. The middle school was gorgeous today. The floors just shined so much, and I really love when I walk into that auditorium, when I'm coming off that, it almost looks like an ice rink. It's so clear. So thank you very much to everyone who's done a lot of good work. I've also attached a progress report on a lot of the projects we were doing. The progress is in red. There's still a lot of projects that we're still in, you know, working on. Some have question marks, because we have some questions about it internally, before we move forward on anything. Several of the projects I just mentioned are at completion or nearing completion. We've greatly expanded the security cameras in the district, not going to tell you where, but we have. We're renovating the bookroom at Whitcomb in the middle of the school. We're replacing many window sills at Richer and looking to install a new phone system at Whitcomb this fall. So a lot of those projects are nearing completion or just getting started right now, but I just want to give you a quick update on some of the big ones. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education approved our food service contract extension that I asked you permission to extend at the last meeting in June. We're just having it run through the gauntlet of getting all the signatures at this point. So as soon as Aramark gives us their five copies back, which have all been signed, I will have them signed by the superintendent, and then I'll move them down to City Hall for their signatures. This summer, not really this summer, it was just a couple weeks ago, but a week ago, Andrew White and I met with Doug Scott and Pam Walderman from the Building Inspection Office. After touring the schools, Doug and Pam both pointed out a lot of items that are not allowed to be present in our schools due to code violations. Curtains, lamps, small household appliances, things of that nature. We're meeting with principals in early September, I think on the seventh is our first meeting, and actually Doug's going to come to the meeting and just kind of give us some guidance and some ideas about his role in the building inspector, and how we can work with him to continue to, you know, create a very safe environment for the schools. So I appreciate their work. They're very thoughtful and very good about going through our schools, understanding it's an education environment, but at the same time, making sure that our schools are safe. So we obviously don't want anything that's flammable, or could be, you know, doesn't have the correct fire code to be in the schools. So when Doug comes and we meet with the principals, we'll talk about it, and then Andy and I, and potentially Doug or Pam, will walk with principals, and we'll point stuff out that if there's still issues, we'll ask the principals to take care of it. Fiscal Seventeen is closed for us, and we had a successful year. We're balancing our revolving accounts with the Otter's Office right now. We did end up with a slight operating account deficit of thirty-three thousand dollars, or approximately five, ten thousands of our total budget. We have a positive balance in Circuit Breaker, because we've been allowed to carry forward a year of Circuit Breaker revenue, so these small amounts will offset. We will just move money from Circuit Breaker to cover that. Our operating budget is in balance at this point. I have been in contact with the Otter's Office over the past week, just to make sure that all of our revolving and grant funds look good. She's closing out the city budget as well, which is a very big, big job, and we just want to make sure that we're up to date with everything to make that easier for her. We don't want any of our accounts to be in deficit and create any problems for their end-of-year closing. Last fiscal year, we were fortunate, again, to fund our capital technology plan. We increased internal security systems and began work on replacing outdated phone system at Whitcomb. Additionally, significant capital contributions from the city are increasing our fire safety systems. Last year, the City Council approved quite a bit of money, over a million dollars, to start updating all of our fire panels, which is a huge improvement, something that is going to help us quite a bit. A lot of our old fire panels, even though they were only about fifteen, twenty years old, we're starting to get to the point where they're causing a couple of issues for us. So getting the new fire panels is just a huge upgrade for us. We're very thankful for that. In addition to that, the work is progressing on all of the fields, so there's fields projects. I was actually stopped in the hallway today by John Mazzella, who is ecstatic about the field, and he was telling me how happy the players were to be playing on the new middle school field. So it was great to get that feedback, even, and explain to him how the city has been funding a lot of these projects. So it was great to get that feedback kind of in the middle of our opening day. So I continue to be thankful to work in this environment. There's a lot of collegiality between finance offices and the schools and the city. We work together to problem-solve, and that would be impossible without the good work from Brian Doni over at City Hall, he's the comptroller, City Auditor Diane Smith, and DPW Commissioner John Galoney, whom I call sometimes in a frantic pace, because I am now knowing about a project, and John jumps right on it and always helps us out. He always has the schools in mind when he's doing a lot of these projects. So I really appreciate the good work that they're doing on their side. It really helps the schools, because a lot of, they're taking a lot of what we need into account when they're doing some of these major projects. So I appreciate the support we continue to get, and I appreciate the school committee's support as we continue to spend our budget for all the right reasons. Thank you. Oh, and I did pass out a position control report. Most of the positions that are still open are support staff. In any of the teaching positions, we do have long-term subs, but there aren't that many at this point. There are very few. So we're pretty pleased with what's open right now. A lot of them are actually in process, too, to be hired. So I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Matthew.
I know we...
Did, I know we had spoken on the transportation. Were you going to talk to Asavet as well, or did that not transpire?
We're just working at Hudson at this time. So we're just doing a co-bid between our two communities. It just so happened that our dates lined up perfectly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes of the June 28th, 2017 meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion?
Just clarification. It says 28th on our minutes, but the minutes actually say the 27th.
You are correct.
The agenda says the 28th.
Okay.
So we're approving the minutes of the 27th.
Yes, the minutes are the June 27th minutes.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of June 27th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. August 11th, 2017 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. MHS cross-country team overnight trip.
Thank you. The athletic director is requesting through Principal Cleary that the MHS cross-country team travel to Wickham Park for the cross-country, 2017 cross-country invitational scheduled for Saturday, October 7th at Wickham Park in Manchester, Connecticut. This will be the fifth year that the cross-country has participated in this overnight, and the team-building experience has been extremely rewarding. The itinerary is included in this and attached, and they are asking for your approval for this overnight trip.
Ms. Matthews.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
I would just ask that they update their form to the current handbook year because I will have handed it out, and it says 1617 instead of 1718.
Really noted.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Policies.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules so that the first item, which was relative to the meals, food service policy, might be able to be voted on tonight. So if we could ask for a suspension of the rules to add that agenda item, I'd appreciate it.
The agenda item that's not, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
We did. I thought so, so I wasn't ready, but we skipped the evaluation.
I won't do it again. All right, I won't do it. Cafeteria employees.
Motion to table.
Motion made and seconded to table. All those in favor, pose carries. Superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, then. I was just confused. I was looking. Did you skip me?
I wasn't ready.
Okay. So in the spring, we did conduct the evaluation on Superintendent Brillick, but did not have all of the results compiled in time to be able to present at the end of the year. So historically, we send the statistical information to DESI, which we did on time, and all of the standards that we're required to evaluate the superintendent on came out as proficient across the board for everything. So historically, what I do now is just kind of pull out a few of the comments that people make, made on their reviews and read them out loud. So a couple people sort of did an introduction, and I wanted to read two of them. So one member wrote, "The superintendent should be recognized for her willingness to step into the breach upon her predecessor's departure from the district and assume leadership of the district. From the beginning, she has led with energy, enthusiasm, good cheer, and a commitment that all staff and students are important and deserve the fullest support that we can, that can be provided. As a result, the 2016-2017 academic year was one of administrative as well as academic progress. I look forward to working with the superintendent during this next academic year." And someone else wrote, "Maureen stepped up to the plate as always when the district needed her most. While much of this year has been a learning year for both the superintendent as well as the school committee, I believe that the team has come together well and is moving in the right direction. Prior expectations or promises must be forgotten, and the goals laid out now must be upheld. You have a set, you have set a tone of making Marlboro one that people want to come to. We just need to make sure that we are giving them all that we have got throughout the system. Please continue to listen, learn, and share. We are all looking forward to continued success." Little entry. And then, I have to be honest, some people wrote their comments in regards to goals, and other people wrote them in regards to the standards, so it was a little hard to pull things together, but I'm doing my best here. So I kind of lumped things under the different standards. So in regards to standard one, which of course I didn't bring, can someone remind the audience what standard one is?
Instructional leadership.
Instructional leadership. Thank you. That would make sense. So one, in regards to instruction, someone wrote, "There are many steps being made to try and improve instruction. MTSS, the DIP, learning walkthroughs, data dashboards, PLCs. I believe that it is imperative that there be more sharing of data vertically, so improvements and alignments could be made to enhance instruction." Someone wrote, "Maureen has done a great job of promoting high expectations in instruction." And I color-coded them all so I wouldn't get mixed up. "Pleased to see a renewed commitment to MTSS. Utilization of data dashboards and data teams are critical to providing real-time information on student performance and opportunities to provide intervention. FAST math is a type of innovative tool we can use to help our kids. Book studies such as those done with teaching with poverty in mind and engaging students with poverty in mind show a commitment to reaching the less advantage of our students. The focus in the last budget on budgeting EL also underscores this commitment. The expansion of STEAM to all middle school students was critical to ensuring the PBL model and all its strengths reaches as many students as possible." Standard two.
Operations and management? I'm picking it up. I'm pulling it up right now. Is that correct, Mrs. Murphy?
That sounds.
Operations and management? Yeah.
The superintendent has definitely put more effective systems and procedures in place to streamline management operations. I believe there is still some work to be done on effective use of student data to drive instruction and achievement. Additionally, I feel that there needs more attention given to creative thinking, coming up with solutions that are outside of the box. We need to find ways to get teachers together to collaborate as well as collaboration amongst students. And regarding scheduling and management, MIS is Management Information System?
Yes.
I think that there have been a number of systems put in place to keep things in the right trajectory, training on the evaluation tool, more people becoming familiar with FAST, learning how to use data on a regular basis to improve teaching. All good points. Regarding law, ethics, and policies, I believe you're trying to stay on top of any legal issues, aiming to keep grievances to a minimum and creating goodwill with the union through solid communications, understanding the laws and ethics involved in a good school atmosphere. You stayed on top of policy issues and have brought up a number of policies to us and have supported the subcommittee to make good decisions and to have open discussions." Three.
Family and community engagement.
Family and community engagement. This is probably the hardest area to conquer in Marlboro. The superintendent has done an amazing job ensuring that the door is always open for any and all stakeholders, parents, students, staff, et cetera. Forging into the diversity of our district has always been a challenge, and I can see that we may actually be heading in the right direction with our welcome videos. Events held in multiple languages or even the superintendent's page translated may help us to narrow the gap. Maureen has been visible throughout the year at various school and community events. She has demonstrated quick responses and resolutions to family and community concerns. And four.
Professional culture.
Professional culture. I believe this is Maureen's strongest area. Maureen has demonstrated strong support of continued staff growth and provided opportunities for improving teaching and teacher satisfaction. Significant progress in communication as evidenced by regular meetings with union leadership, hiring of new communications coordinator with robust job responsibilities, implementation of new website, and regular walkthroughs of district schools. Her regular meetings with district parent council, periodic attendance at PTO meetings, and full support of the registration and parent outreach center all underscore the superintendent's belief in strong outreach and regular communication. It is clear that the superintendent is committed to ensuring that all MPS constituencies are reached and included. And commitment to high standards. You have attended events and seminars for you to learn more, to bring back ideas to help improve the district. You support many leaders within the district for attending symposiums and encouraging staff to take opportunities to learn and get involved for the betterment of our staff, which will help our district. You've encouraged leaders to get involved in furthering their learning and to present and learn with peers and higher education opportunities. You continuously support reaching out for grants, creating relationships with groups that support STEM and STEAM, robotics, et cetera, and you set the bar high on strong communication skills, trying to respond to people in reasonable timeframes and being thoughtful in those responses. I believe that you try to work with no surprises, thought, no surprise thought when communicating with school committee members, but there are still a few instances where things may lapse. Overall, I believe that you work very hard to create a very open communication style. So those are a few of the comments that came out of your reading.
Good feedback. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions, concerns from committee members? Seeing none.
My friends will be extending the 2022.
On the motion. It's been a motion made to extend the contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Mrs. Policy.
Mrs. Policy. Love it. So I'd like to make a, or ask for a suspension of the rules to add an agenda item so that we may vote on one of the policies per our discussion with Mr. Bergeron.
One of the policies we have on the agenda to vote on?
Yeah, we don't have to add an agenda item. We just have to vote early.
Okay.
Because this is for free.
Which would be adding because we don't have it on for voting, but that's fine.
Okay. Do you want to just go through them, or?
I would be more than happy to go through them. I just didn't want to jump to the vote without anyone understanding. So the policies that we have before us tonight, and what we're trying to do also, so I can give you kind of a bigger umbrella, is we are really going to try and plow forward on doing some updates because not only do we need to update on getting all of the policies changed with having our new logo and everything, but many of them have not necessarily been looked at in a long time. So we're going to do as best as we can, start plowing through it, and some of that will mean that there's not going to necessarily be substantial changes, and in some cases, we'll look for removals. Mr. Walter is probably smiling in there. He's loving that idea. So tonight, for our first read, we have policy 1.010, which is the mission statement. Policy 1.020, staff recognition removal. And what that means, folks, is not that we don't want to recognize staff, but the policy seems a little kind of crazy because we should be recognizing our staff anyway, all the time. So to have a policy seems a little odd in some cases. Policy 1.200, prayer in public schools. Policy 3.900, the food service charging policy, and that's the one that we'd like to discuss for a vote tonight. And then policy 7.950, high school promotion graduation requirement. So that's what we have.
Is there any further discussion on policy 3.900?
That's the food service.
Which is the food service. The food service charging policy.
So we need to discuss that one now that you want us to vote on. Okay.
Are we discussing it now, or when a motion is made to approve?
Contain a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minor changes to the food service charging policy.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not wish to be the food service charging Grinch. But as we are all aware, we have made significant progress in reducing our unpaid food service balance and just, oh, I don't know, a couple of years ago, we were somewhat north of what $40,000 or $50,000 in unpaid food balance. We tightened up our policies, and lo and behold, the money crawled out of the woodwork, as I suspected it would. I generally support the revisions, but I will add one caveat of concern that I have, which is I do not wish to see the power that we grant the principals to essentially void the policy in particular instances, become in effect a blanket waiver and have us back to balances of $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 in unpaid food costs. That's money we could spend on one or two teachers, and that is the only part of the policy that makes me nervous, is how much authority and power we may be giving to principals. And human nature being human nature, it's going to be difficult to say, yes, we will waive the policy for one student, but we will not waive it for student B, and I am concerned that we are opening the door, perhaps at this point just to crack, to essentially vitiate the entire policy and the progress that has been made. So I would ask that both the superintendent and our assistant superintendent, Mr. Bergeron, keep tight rein on the principals' use of this power because that is my concern. And I would ask for perhaps periodic updates, as Mr. Bergeron has wanted to do anyway, of what the outstanding balances are at each school. Is there a, was this a request born out of some incident or reason that we grant the principals this power?
Thank you, and I understand exactly what you're saying. I share the same concerns. The request that you're seeing today was born from healthy discussion over a period of an entire year with principals about the food service charging policy. And one of the things that I took away from the discussion with them is that especially at the lower levels, the principals wanted the ability to make that decision as they need to. With that decision also comes the accountability for them, and in the policy, one way that it becomes accountable is that at each month, starting in October, when I do my first balancing report, every school has to encumber whatever their negative balance is out of their general supply line. So what's going to happen is every principal is going to become instantly accountable for their decision-making on their food service balances because it's going to affect the bottom line of their school. Now, I don't want the balances to get back to the point we're at. It was horrendous. It was over, when I stepped into the district, it was over $67,000. It was completely unreasonable. The last couple of years, the last two years, we've ended below $3,000 each year, which I think is, for a system our size, less than a dollar a student, it's actually not that bad. Looking at this, really, the policy changes. Looking at this, really, the, the policy changes are to give the principals a little bit more of a say in the process. But also, it puts a lot of the accountability on the food service manager, myself, and the principal. Because especially at the elementary level, that we need to document that we've had the discussions with the parents about this issue. And that's really what it comes down to, is documenting that the district has done significant diligence to make sure that we simply have someone who is just not paying. I want to make sure that they're not eligible for free and reduced lunch. I want to have a discussion. There might be a household emergency that's, they simply forgot to pay the bill and have not had time to get back to us. That's why I want to give the principals a little bit more leeway until that point. So I, I understand and agree with your concern. It does affect our bottom line. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we, as a district, are doing everything we can to not get to the alternative meal. That, that's kind of the goal. That should be the last resort, and that's what the policy, I think, now reflects.
Ms. Ryan.
I just have a question. Why, I see that elementary, middle school, they're giving five meals missed. Why the high school only three? I know that there's a price difference.
Traditionally, on almost, this has actually been a big discussion on the business managers' listserv, and most, most school districts, it's zero.
Right.
They, they don't allow any charging whatsoever. In fact, they will, in, in most high schools, turn away a student if they don't have funds. So when we looked at this, we assume young adults, they're going to be able to quickly render the issue, as opposed to the younger kids, where it takes a little bit more time to communicate with the parents. With the younger adults at the high school, we think it's more of a quick discussion, as in, you're already at one, charge. Make sure you don't get to three, because we're going to have to give you an alternate meal. And they can quickly disseminate that to the parents. The elementary level, it takes a little bit more effort from the managers to go out to the parents and do more of a discussion. But that, that's the way we looked at it. And before, it was one. So we figure by extending it to three, we're giving just, you know, for example, this week, we have two school days. So if we were still at one, on the first school day, if they charged, they'd automatically be an alternate meal. Whereas this gives us the two school days, and if there are balances already outstanding, it gives us an opportunity to make a couple of phone calls and, and, and get some people involved.
Is there leeway in the policy? And I apologize, I don't know it word for word. But, you know, if you have somebody who is routinely paying every month, and then, you know, they're getting a cheese sandwich, because on the fourth day, they, oops, forgot to bring their money again, like...
That's why, I, in every, every school, the principal retains the right to, to do that. So the principal retains the right to be able to say, you do not have to serve the alternate meal.
Okay.
Ms. Matthew.
I note that you added the grade specific to each thing. And I, I guess I'm, is it the cart before the horse? Because we're not there yet.
So, we had a lot of discussion in our policy subcommittee about, about that exact issue, frankly, as well as then some of the numbers of meals and, and how they were accommodated. Because in some cases, where Mr. Bergeron was bringing back some of the data, some of the places that charges were happening, and, and there were additional charges that were being made, that were putting people over quickly, were like breakfast pickups that some of the kids were doing, where their, the parents had absolutely no clue necessarily that a kid was doing that, and that is jacking up the charges, if you will, right away. The grades issue of going up through fifth grade, since it's consideration of an elementary school level, that was something that Mr. Daniels had voiced, that he really wanted to try and keep that within the elementary level, because they've just been ma- they've just made like a switch. So, that was, you know, that, we recognize that we haven't switched to the K through five from an elementary school standpoint, but since we, in a lot of ways, are treating the fifth graders as an elementary level, that's where we were heading with this, and that was the wish of the building principal as well.
A follow-up to that, I guess my only concern, this goes back to Mr. Bergeron, really, is the, it's, all of these things seem to put an increased responsibility, not only on, A, the cashier that's dealing with it, who now has to look, is it a fifth grader? Is it, um, is it the third time, fifth time? Do I now need to get the food services manager involved in order to then call down the principal? And, I mean, it, it seems to be adding more to something that was pretty straightforward, or at least, I thought we had come to that point. I mean, you go from sixty-seven to four, you're doing something right. You know, are we, are we solving an issue for a handful versus the whole, or creating more issues for the whole?
Well, I think the nice thing is, we have the technology to be able to make it easier for us. So a lot of times, in the policy that we're looking at, it, it says very clearly that only at such time that a parent refuses remedy will we put an alternate meal in place. So what will happen is, we can put notifications into our point-of-sale system that literally will say, provide an alternate meal. And we can put the dates, we can say when we talk to people, I mean, we could put all that information right in there to make that system a little bit easier, so the cashier doesn't have to be the decision-maker, but the cashier can just follow the prompt. So there, there are things we can do to make our lives easier, and our hope is that we have less children, and we really didn't have that many children on alternate meals, where hope is that we have less children at these younger levels, because we're hoping that with this policy in place, it'll be the impetus for the food service director, myself, and the principal to get more involved with the parent, to figure out what's going on. And there, there may be a couple of cases where the parent just refuses everything we offer, and, and we have to put the child on an alternate meal.
Mrs. Matthews, the other thing that you brought up in regards to the grade levels, that was another point that we did discuss during the policy subcommittee meeting, and it was brought up that, as a standard, the fifth graders are eating separate from sixth graders, or separate from seventh graders, eighth graders. So they would know at that lunch, the fifth graders would, you know, be on a different level. So that was another point that we did have some discussion about, too.
I guess my, my concern just comes down to making sure that the food services director is training everybody appropriately to all respond appropriately, because I think that is probably where the concern comes.
Absolutely.
Scary.
Just as a, as a way to illustrate it, and hopefully Mike can, can tell us that the number, if you can recall it. As far as alternate meals, when we initially did that, it was a big, bigger number, and now it's much smaller. Can you elaborate on what those, what that was?
Yeah, I remember talking to him, and it was... I, I remember talking to the food service director about that. When we first implemented the policy, we were making upwards of twenty to thirty alternate meals in some locations, and then it fell down into the single digits. It, it was very few. It was between three and four. So the, the policy we had in place worked well for what it was doing, but the, the suggestions that I brought forward to the committee are hopefully to help us get to the next point. You know, we, we just want to encourage more discussion with the parent before we get to the alternate meal place. And the, you know, as we look at all of these policies, in October and on November, if we start to see the food service charges going up, I'm going to report it to you, and I'm going to tell you what they are, because I've, I mean, I've reported to you every month since we put the POS in place. And I've given that report to make sure that the school committee knows exactly where the, if there's a deficit balance, where it is.
Yeah, and...
So you can't hide it, because it'll be right in our face every other report.
Right. To that point, we did have a lot of discussion with Mr. Bergeron over the summer, and were hesitant about making the changes, because obviously, we had seen that it worked. But this was something that he felt like he wanted to give the opportunity back to the building administrators to make sure that they were managing it appropriately, would have to be reporting it back on a very regular basis, and was going to also affect their bottom line pretty quickly. So we would have pretty immediate notification if something was, you know, going to be out of whack.
If I could just follow up, your comments just made me think of one thing. I think if, if the principals are going to grant, I'll call it a waiver, to this policy, I think it should be made clear to the parents and/or the student that this waiver will not be granted in perpetuity, that we will reserve the right to rescind the waiver and subject them to the alternate meal. And, and just to the parents and the students out there, no one's seeking to embarrass or stigmatize children, and I, and I know there have been a lot of emotions even nationwide on this issue. But two or three years ago, we had sixty-seven thousand dollars in unpaid food balances. That is one, one and a half, almost two teachers that we could not put in front of your kids. And if we get that balance back up to that neighborhood again, that's, every dollar that we have to put towards an unpaid balance is a dollar that cannot be put in the classroom. That is why I am so adamant about this issue and this policy. It is not because I want to embarrass or stigmatize kids or parents, but we need everybody who can step up and, and, and do their share to do that, so that we can devote every dollar we can to the classroom and not to ancillary costs such as unpaid food balances, because I would love to take sixty-seven thousand dollars and hire one and a half or two teachers, as opposed to having to pay off food tabs. So that is why we, we engage in this discussion in good cheer, and, 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 but I, everybody is committed to wanting to put every dollar we can into the classroom, so that we can instruct your kids to the best of, of our abilities. So, thank you, Mr. Bergeron. You can send the principles my way if the numbers get out of control. Thank you.
And, and as just a, a follow-up to that, we do have systems in place for families who cannot afford. And so if something should change in a family situation, maybe there's a job loss or some other unknown, you know, issue that causes it to be a hardship, there are mechanisms in place to assist families. So that should never, ever be the reason why people get into this situation.
Any other questions? Seeing none on the motion to approve. All those in favor, pose carries. Uh, substitute pay.
Do we need to accept the first rates? No?
No. Been presented.
Sorry.
Mr. Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, after a lot of discussion with principals, after a lot of thought about our own processes, we've asked the committee to consider looking at our substitute rates for certain positions. It has been a while since we've looked at substitute rates. I couldn't find the actual date within any of the minutes, but it has been quite a while.
May I just add?
Yeah.
So we always do this at budget time.
Yeah.
So you won't find it, we've never done it in the middle of, you know, in the beginning of the school year. It's always been tied to the budget. So you're right, we haven't done it for a while, but that's where you would find it. But I, I've never even discussed it in the six years, even at budget time.
So it's been a little while since we looked at this.
In the last twelve years, we have. But perhaps not in the last six. It's time to change it.
Yeah. And part, there's several reasons why we're bringing this forward. One is just our competitive ability in the marketplace to be able to secure subs and retain them. That's, that's the first. The second is, when we don't have substitutes in our pool and have the ability to hire them for the schools, a lot of times what's happening is, we're taking paraeducators out of their positions, servicing children on IEPs, and we're placing them as substitutes within the schools. And that's really doing a disservice to the kids in our community who need those services. Because a lot of times, we also can't hire replacement for the paraeducator who's doing that. So, and twofold, that's two of the reasons why we're looking at this. The human resources department did a great job looking at all of the surrounding areas, and surrounding areas are actually pretty low as well, in some areas, for some of the subpay. But we really weren't competitive in the long, long-term subpay. And I think that hurts us in a lot of ways, because when we're looking for a long-term sub, a lot of times, after a certain amount of time, we need a certified candidate to be able, because we're going to actually report them out to the state. So being able to attract candidates who have bachelor's degrees and are certified to teach is difficult when you're offering a hundred and forty dollars a day, when other systems are offering upwards of two-hundred-and-fifty to over three-hundred dollars a day, because what they're doing is putting them right on bachelor's step on, from first day. So our competitive advantage there, we just didn't have it. So it's difficult for us to maintain our competition in that area. On this, the substitute teacher, on a day-to-day sub, we noticed that there really wasn't any benefit for someone who either has a bachelor's degree or is licensed to sub for us, because we had one rate for everything. And that one rate of eighty dollars per day was regardless of your qualifications as a substitute, but it just was the, the average compensation. So what we're proposing is to create a scale where for, if you have a bachelor's degree, you get additional funds, and if you're a licensed teacher in Massachusetts, you get even more. So we're trying to pay for qualifications on top of trying to be more competitive. In addition to that, we're trying to incentivize the behavior of coming and working in Marlboro in a positive way. So for each quarter of the school year, so for each forty-five days, if the sub comes in to Marlboro and is a substitute teacher for thirty of the forty-five, we would pay a bonus of ten dollars per day. And this is to incentivize folks to take our calls and take our calls first. It is a very competitive market out there, as everybody knows, I don't even need to say it, but our unemployment rate is south of four percent now in Massachusetts. It's maybe hovering around three percent. It's, it's pretty low. So substitutes right now are a valuable commodity, and we want to recognize that with an incentive program to be able to have people take our calls first. Additionally, looking at when we can get paraeducators or behavior tech subs, which is rare, because it's, it's very hard to do, we were only paying fifty dollars per day. It's actually significantly less than minimum wage. We want to raise that to eighty dollars a day. That might get a small pool to be able to use that, but we, you know, that, that's secondary to the teaching one. That's most important to us first. In the cafeteria, we'd like to raise it to thirteen dollars an hour, just to be a little bit more competitive. We're actually struggling right now to get cafeteria subs at ten dollars an hour. I don't need to mention the local economy, which is booming. There's a lot of jobs that we're now competing with at this rate. There's a lot of hiring going on for Apex, there's a lot of hiring in other areas, and a lot of those jobs, we're, we're just not as competitive right now with, with our wages at ten dollars an hour. So raising that, we think, to thirteen might get a couple more people interested on being subs with us in the cafeteria. And at the clerk level, we, we don't as often hire substitutes here, but when we do, eleven dollars an hour is just not enough. We, we need folks with at least a minimum ability with, you know, data processing, working on Microsoft Office products, being able to do what we need to do. And we figure if we can get a little bit of leeway of up to sixteen dollars per hour, at least then we can make decisions about where, where they should be on that, that range. So when, when you look at all of this, obviously, the first question you should be asking me is, how much is this going to cost us? So for the long-term subs, the one thing that I want to mention is, anytime we're hiring a long-term sub, it's because we don't have a current employee in place. And whether they be out on a femal leave, or a maternity leave, or a long-term maternity leave, if they're taking the year off to spend with their child, all of those means that we're usually not paying them their regular salary. They're usually out on sick leave for a period of eight to twelve weeks, and then they're unpaid. So when they're unpaid, the district has that portion of money available to pay the long-term sub at a reduced rate. Because our bachelor's one is more, is, is twice as much right now as our long-term sub rate. So we're always recouping money in those ways, so the long-term subs aren't going to affect our budget. We're using the already budgeted salary to be able to pay for that. The second question about our regular sub lines, for when people either calling sick or using a personal day, we only spent eighty-one percent of that budget last year, and that's because we can't find enough people to do the jobs. So raising this, although it, there are some larger increases, we do believe that we're going to still be within our budget. And the nice thing is, like, just exactly what I said about the food service, I'm going to report out on this. If I'm asking for a change, I'm going to show you what, you know, the numbers look like, and we're going to look at this. And I think it's probably something we should look at every year. I know, maybe we've been delinquent in looking at it, but it's become, it's become an issue, and it's become an issue for the principals. It's making it very tough for them to manage their buildings. their buildings. So when we're looking at this, we're trying to give them a little bit of help, and also be a little bit more competitive in the market as well.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Bolhendra.
Is there any need to have a discussion with unions about this?
These aren't, these aren't in their bargaining agreements.
Just asking.
Ms. Tennessee.
My only comment was going to be in support of trying to make some changes. We've had a lot of discussions during those DIP meetings, which a number of you all were in, and it's come up time and time and time again, about us having a hard time being competitive within the market. So I'm definitely in support of your camp, and I do think it would be helpful, though, to have updates to understand where our expenditures are and how things are tracking.
Any other comments, questions? Containing a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed rate changes.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries.
Thank you.
Acceptance of donations. Life Touch Photography, Jarik School, Jarik Elementary School, Kane Elementary School, Whitcomb School. Jarik, one thousand ninety-six dollars forty-three cents. Kane, eight hundred thirty-four dollars seventy-four cents. And Whitcomb, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. The Sonic Angel Fund. Whitcomb School, two thousand dollars.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Funding Factory. Whitcomb School, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. First Congressional Church. Backpack Congregational Church, I'm sorry. Backpack donation for students in grades K through four, twenty-six hundred dollars.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Courts of subcommittees. Any reports? Seeing none. Members' forum. Ms. Matthews.
I've reviewed the warrant and signed it.
Thank you.
Warrant's fine. Mr. Walter.
Just wanted to extend thanks to our vice chair for her work on the superintendent's evaluation, gathering the evaluations, and collating and forwarding numbers, and synopscizing the comments. So thank you once again.
She's so good at it.
Just doing my job.
Ms. Ryan.
Can I just make a request for our next meeting, to have the updated class enrollment numbers? Like, the actual classrooms? Like, how many are in each actual classroom?
Not average.
Not the averages, please. Thank you.
Any other members?
I want to wish everybody a wonderful first day tomorrow.
Fantastic.
Except the kindergartners.
Except the kindergartners.
Except for kindergartners.
Donnie will be with us all year, is that right?
That was a motion. I accept.
Tennessee. I do not, but thank you.
I just actually wanted to thank the superintendent for having Bill Daggett come today, and opening day was really wonderful. And I think he gave everyone a lot to really think about for the future of the school district. Got the wheels turning. So thank you so much for having him come.
And thank you for those of you who were able to make it. The two videos are posted on the district website, in case you want to see them again. And for those of you who were not able to see, one was a retirement video of people who recently retired, talking about what it meant to them to teach in Marlboro Public Schools. And the other was a parody of Moana, a song from Moana, that really defies description. So please see it. They're on the website. Thank you, Reina.
Any other members?
And thank you to Jill Moran, for all her hard work, putting them together, and working all summer on them. She's fabulous job.
I just wanted to also let everyone know that we were notified from MMA. Again, they're doing their essay contest. The superintendent agreed to push it down to the eighth grade to do the essay contests, and the third grade to do a poster contest. It's a great opportunity for our system to show the other communities in the MMA, the quality of kids we have. So there's ninety communities competing, and they'll be doing their announcements of the winners in January. So excited that we can show the type of kids we have. Anything else? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Welcome back. We're out.